So we have our dais full, so I'm gonna go ahead and call the study session for October fourteenth order. And ask the clerk for a roll call, please.
Director Cheyenne Wright.
Yeah.
Director Nicole Wiltshire.
Here.
Secretary Arthur Perry.
Here.
Vice President Robert Ooten.
Here.
President Mike Schaefer.
Here.
Thank you.
Uh, public comments, this is the time for the, anyone in the audience to make comments on items within our purview. At the sanitary district, but not listed on the agenda. Um, seeing, I believe anyone for public comments. I will close that and move us to, uh, section C, items of study. Scott, you wanna start it off?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. So this is the, uh, fourth year that district has hosted the Y C Lee Fellowship. Uh, the Y C Lee stands for Young Southeast Asian Leaders Initiative. And it's a program that's funded by the federal government, the Department of, of State. And it's a way to, uh, enhance our relationships, American relationships with Southeast Asian countries. Uh, as well as an opportunity for us to share US best practices with fellows so that they could take that back. Uh, to, to their, um, to their country. Uh, most of the fellows, uh, are here in the US to learn about sustainability best practices. It's a very competitive process. They, they usually get about fifteen hundred applications and they only accept about, about maybe thirty or forty, uh, of the fellows. And then, um, the fellows go throughout the country, uh, hosted by cities throughout the country. I mean, there's, right now, there's fellows in, in Texas, Florida. Uh, Montana, which they're experiencing snow for the first time in their lives, right? Uh, Maine, uh, and of course, here, here in, um, uh, California. And so I am pleased to introduce our, our fellow, um, is Valerie Kegus from, uh, San Fernando, uh, Philippines. And a little bit about, um, Val- Valerie, she is an environmental management specialist at the Environmental Management Bureau located in Central Luzon in the Philippines. Uh, a Latin honor graduate with a degree in environmental science. She recently earned a certificate in teaching. Which led to her becoming a licensed professional teacher in the Philippines. And she's currently pursuing her master's in environmental management. She has over five years of professional experience. Her career reflects her commitment to environmental sustainability, education, and community engagement. And she also volunteers to several organizations in the Philippines. She here, she is here, uh, visiting CMSD to learn about, uh, environmental policy, advocacy, and education, particularly in pollution control and abatement. And she also, uh, wants to learn about community engagement strategies as well as using technology for wastewater treatment and environmental quality assessment. And so Valerie's been with us for already, already for two weeks. And in those two weeks, she, she has, uh, visited, uh, the Byron landfill. She's gone on tour, uh, the OC sand treatment plant. Uh, yesterday, she was, uh, watched a, uh, waste composition study and toured the Murph. Uh, she also spent a whole day with a wastewater crew. She was out, actually, she's out in the streets seeing how the guys clean the sewers and how they maintain, um, the pumps. Um, tomorrow and Thursday, she's gonna spend all day at OC Sand. She's gonna be in their, um, ocean monitoring, um, and source control department, uh, which is basically the lab. So, um, she'll be there all day on, on tomorrow and Thursday. And then we also have other adventures for her. We're gonna take her to, um, some other pump stations to show her about odor control. Um, she's also gonna ride along with David, so she'll be here for another two weeks. Uh, another great, uh, aspect about this program is we also learn about each other's cultures, right? So we learn about her culture and she learns about our culture. So. We take her on, she's already visited Hollywood. Um, she went to the Motion Academy Museum. Uh, we went to downtown Disneyland, so it's, it's all in, you know. A lot of fun experiencing the culture and sharing our experience with her as well. So, and you're just too Valerie, so this is Valerie and welcome Valerie, so.
With your credentials, Valerie, we should be going to you for, for learning. I mean, it's very impressive and, uh. Uh, welcome to our, our humble little district and, uh, thank you for, for being part of the program.
You, um, I'm very happy to be familiar with the Colorado sanitary district because although we have the mandates, I mean. My, um, my current job is aligned with what the CMSD is doing. And while it is aligned, um, the technologies and systems, we're still, um, we're still on the process of having this. So having to see this in actual is, um, very inspiring and it's what we aim for, to have the sewer systems. Because in most, uh, cities in the Philippines, we still rely on septic tank systems and, so, um. Uh, you're, you're al- already on the stage of managing it and we're still aiming to have it. So, um, it's a really nice experience to, uh, be here in California, explore the city. And also exchange culture with, uh, American people for, for us as from the Philippines, so.
Well, thank you again and welcome, welcome to, uh, to our little district. We, we look forward to you finishing out and, um. My, my daughter-in-law is anxious to meet you, so we're still working on some of that stuff, so.
I'm looking forward to meeting my good man.
Right out here. Thank you.
Orange County Ten District, are you gonna take the boat out in the water?
Oh, that's gonna answer. That was, that's the plan. Hopefully they will, yeah.
Okay, do you get seasick?
Great, great experience.
Oh, I do.
Yeah, yeah.
I usually sleep on that boat because I get seasick.
Good thing you didn't go out today.
Scott, what about, have you thought about taking her to the cube? Yes, she, we, we did, uh, we, um, um, Marissa Grace, we got able to get tickets. She's actually going next week to the cube.
That'd be real good.
Yeah.
Tyson, perfect, definitely. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um. Do we not have a code enforcement report?
No, David is out today, so he'll provide his presentation at the next meeting.
I thought I saw, was that maybe he's.
It was.
All right, uh, let's go to item three then.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this item is requested by the board to be brought to, uh, a study session, meeting for discussion. Um, as, as you know, uh, um, we, uh, follow the Urban Public Construction Cost Accounting Act. A state law that sets limits for, um, performing informal bid procedures. Uh, right now, our bid limit, uh, is between, um, thirty thousand to a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So anything under a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, the, the board has given the authority, the general manager to sign contracts. Anything over a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, it bring, it's brought back to the board for your approval consideration. And so the board requested staff to bring this item back for today to consider maybe increasing that limit. And since we adopted the act, uh, gosh, I think it's probably close to fifteen years ago. Um, there's been several amendments, uh, increasing the limits, uh, that's allowable by the law. And it's most recently, it was just, uh, the new, just, uh, AB twenty-one ninety-two, which has recently passed, that went into effect on January first of this year. So the new limit now is between seventy-five thousand to two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So, um, if the board wishes to increase the general manager's limit, it can go up to two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That means any contracts up to hundred and twenty, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, the general manager can sign. Anything over two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, it would go to, to the board of directors. Um, if you, again, if you're not comfortable with two hundred and twenty, if you wanna still increase the limit, it can be anywhere between what we have now, a hundred and twenty-five to two hundred and twenty. That's, that's your pleasure. Uh, I also listed in the staff report, uh, general manager authorities to sign from others, special districts. And as you see Mesa Water District has, uh, the highest limit of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for public works contracts. But when it comes to other services like professional services or maintenance contracts, it's lower at seventy-five thousand dollars. And then you have the Orange County Sanitation District, uh, the general manager there is authorized to sign all contracts up, up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Most general managers, it looks like there are signing authorities up to a hundred thousand dollars. So, so even at, at CMSD's le- limit, it is higher than, than most general managers. But again, it's, it's, it's at your discretion if you wanna keep it as, as is, or if you want to increase it up to two hundred and twenty thousand, it's at your pleasure. So. Looking for some direction from the board and what you wanna do.
Have you thought about an amount that would be appropriate for us because of the costs are going up?
Well, I, 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 I showed if, if you're looking at efficiencies and you want projects done soon. I listed on the staff report, let's say if you, the board did approve two hundred and twenty thousand dollar limit, there's seven projects on here in the, in the past, I think, um. Was it since two thousand nineteen? So the past six years, there's seven projects that we probably could've got done a little sooner, more efficiently. Um, if it was under two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So it just really depends on your comfort level. If, if, if you want these projects done really quickly, then my suggestion, go two-twenty. Um, i- if you're comfortable the way it is right now, then just stick the way, the way it is right now.
One of the, yeah, I, looking for your comfort level, um. And, and being able to get things done on a, on a quick basis, there's no provision in the law or in anything that says. Uh, we could have two different categories, in other words, run it. And I don't know whether, what other term to use, but run-of-the-mill projects. You keep it the same because it's, there's no expediencing it, but emergency things, can we do a separate?
Well, I mean, once you come, there's, there's limits that, that I can sign contracts over a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Remember the classic, remember the South Coast Plaza project?
And that's, I was.
So I was, I was authorized, this, we, we declared an emergency, the board declared an emergency, I was authorized to sign contracts over a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Then we bring it back to the board to ratify it. So the, I do have authority to sign contracts in emergency situations.
You know, the thought I had is, i- if you had an emergency provision. There could be people in the public that think it's a subjective judgment on your part and, and might not like it.
I still have to come to the board too, I have to come to the board and you have, uh, you know, hopefully would agree with that. Um, uh, again, I, I think since I've been here, I think I've only made emergency situations maybe three times, you know, in the fifteen years, so it doesn't happen a lot. You know, um, my, my, honestly, my comfort level is the way it is right now. I'm sure my staff would disagree with me because, you know, they wanna get the projects done. But honestly, my comfort level is, is the way it is now, and I'm fine with it, but again, it's at your discretion.
I guess if you're comfortable with it, my thought would be, leave it alone.
Yeah, my staff will probably disagree with me. They'll probably, they'll probably get mad at me, but, you know, I'm sure that they would want some of her.
I have, I have thoughts to add. Obviously, um, interested to hear on like the context of past conversations too. But I think seeing the comparison to other special districts, I would lean towards just staying more like conforming to them. And then I'm also just thinking about like the legacy of the policy that like there will be future board members, future staff. And so I feel like it makes sense to just stay in that.
Yeah, and for the future, I mean, you know, it's a crapshoot on what inflation's gonna do and.
Yeah.
It could be a time where it's more realistic to, to go for the.
Yeah.
I.
I feel like it's harder to pull back though, down the road, rather than be more, um, liberal, so.
Oh, I think. The Orange County Sand District has hundreds of contracts and they have, you know, the hundred and fifty thousand dollar limit. Um, and I've, uh, been on the board for years and I've never heard them, you know, they have emergencies also. Uh, I don't know if it's proportionate to what we have. We have relatively few. I'm, I'm comfortable with leaving the authority level at the, at the present level.
You know, it's interesting, you, I, it was really interesting to see what the other districts' limits were. And my thought process was, they're just not paying attention. I mean, or they're, they're, they don't think about it. How can, uh, a district the size of Moulton Nagel Water District only have a seventy-five thousand dollar limit? I mean, you're talking about a district that does sewer and water. And now, that was intriguing to think about, um. So tell me about Midway City, so that I'm, why do they have two, a public works and a goods and service?
Um, update, uh, I think, I believe Midway Cities, their, their, their limit was like thirty thousand dollars. I mean, it was really, really low. And so the, the general manager, um, successfully, uh, um, shared with, uh, the, his board. Um, the, all the other general managers' limits and they increased it. They, I, for some reason, I don't know why they split it. I don't, I think that's harder for general managers. When you split the limits on public works versus other service contracts, I think it should all be one. But that's just the way that, I was just, again, their comfort level, they want the general manager. Um, they are really heavy now on public works projects, they're, they're getting caught up on a lot of theirs. So they know there's gonna be more public works projects, that's why they increased to a hundred thousand. But for all, all those services like maintenance and public ser- um, professional services, they want it fifty thousand.
You know, we, for me, I, I tend to gravitate when I looked at these comparisons, it to them first, because they're the closest.
Sure. I, so they just, they just increased, it was like maybe a month or two ago. They just, they just increased. It was just recently.
I, I think you have probably a general consensus up here then.
Yes, I'm, I'm the only one that likes an increase personally, because I like to think, see things happen faster.
Sure.
Now, I think Mark said that he made a comment to that too, but, so I, I'll agree with the board, but. I'm the only one that thinks that race is important.
Has a project ever been presented to the board and then we denied it, or we sent it back for bidding within this range?
There was, there was one, and I, I could have Mark, um, talk about it. It was a little different, so we tried to, I believe we tried to sole source a project. Mark gave some good justifications. Uh, the board directed staff to go out to bid. And it turned out the bid was actually higher than what we negotiated with.
Hmm.
So it's, you know, you kind of, sometimes you roll the dice.
Let, let me add a little bit of information. Number one, I support the general manager's recommendation. Because when we've got a project that's a hundred and twenty-five thousand or over, in order to get, um. A decent suite of bidders, we have to advertise and we wanna get several bids. So, I'm gonna say when we get to the higher values, we're gonna, we're gonna need time anyway. So, so, you know, whether it's a hundred and twenty-five or, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand, it doesn't make any difference to me. Um, so, so I support the general manager's recommendations and where the board is going with the upper limit. And what delegation the general manager is, um, saying that he's comfortable with. Uh, I will make one comment. Uh, what I think we should look at in order to make the smaller projects go a little faster. Is instead of a fifteen thousand dollar, uh, bidding, uh, requirement, that we move that to twenty thousand. And, and allow the general manager to, to move that, to increase that program. Because it's the small little contracts that I can't get bidders, because they don't wanna spend their money bidding on a little fifteen thousand, twenty thousand. You know, thirteen thousand dollar project, because it's expensive for them to prepare the paperwork and give me the, the bids. So if we're gonna raise any limit, I would, I would say let's raise that one. Uh, but the project that, um, the general manager is referring to is on Elden bypass improvements. That we, we actually bid it, we advertised, and I ended up with, uh, uh, two bids. One contractor pulled his bid and I negotiated with the second contractor and we developed a price. And so I came to the board saying that the story, how we, uh, bid the project. And I ended negotiating with the second low bidder and I actually had, had reduced their bid price by quite a bit. Uh, as you recalled, uh, at the time, Director Echols had some questions, you sent it back. And we went ahead and rebid the project per the board's desire. It turned out that it was about eighty-five thousand or ninety thousand dollars more than the price I had negotiated. That's about the only time that I think it was a bad call to, uh, go back out. But, you know, it is what it is and it, and we honored, and we went through the process. So I guess you've heard my thoughts and comments on, on the three items and I support what the general manager is asking you for.
What do we need to do? I, I tend to agree with, with Mark's comment, uh, the engineers' comments on the smaller.
So if that's what the board wants, it just goes to Russian, we'll, we'll come back with an ordinance and we'll, we'll amend that, that limit.
I'd agree. I think so too. What amount were you thinking? I, until I see, I'm not sure. What is it now, thirty?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Oh, fifteen.
I think, I think under fifteen, we don't get any bids. We just go on, we can just call someone. What, what Mark's saying is if we go to twenty, twenty-five, anything under twenty-five, we don't ask bid, we just call a reputable contractor, hey, can you give us a proposal for this, this project?
That sounds smart. So you're gonna come back to us?
Yes, we'll come back with an ordinance, propose ordinance.
Um, okay, item four.
Is yours? Yeah, okay, Marissa will be giving us report.
Good morning, president and board. Um, so district staff is currently exploring the development of a backyard. Um, and verma composting workshop program. The program would essentially involve hiring an educational consultant to conduct workshops. Um, and then customers who complete the workshop would be eligible for a low-cost or free composting bin. Um, the SB thirteen eighty-three grant would fully fund this program. There is approximately forty thousand dollars of grant funds available, um, if we wanted to proceed with this program. So at this time, staff is, is really seeking the board's, um, feedback on whether you would like us to proceed with developing and implementing a composting workshop program. If so, we'll get that process started. Um, if you would prefer us to focus our efforts and funds on something else, we can do that. So it's really just looking to know if you'd like us to proceed with the program.
But didn't we have a program like this a number of years ago?
We did, uh, we had a program where we would, um, we wouldn't give it away, but we bought, um, composting, um, uh, kits. And we would, there were usually costs, I think, seventy-five hundred dollars, but we'd sell them back for twenty-five dollars. It weren't free, but, you know, they still cost a lot of money. And then we hired, um, uh, someone who specialized in composting and, and she would do workshops over at Fairview Park. You know, we'd schedule meetings, um, how to properly compost, and it was quite successful. It wa- it really was.
Program that you're looking for now?
I'm sorry?
Is that the type of program?
It would be similar, yeah. It would be same idea, workshop conducted by an educational consultant. And then we would have the compost bins avail- available for customers who complete the workshop.
But we have money available, that's.
We do, yeah. We have forty thousand dollars, uh, of grant funding that's set aside for that program if we want to proceed.
Money's in the bank, right?
Exactly.
The workshop program. It, it, I, I, I probably support that, but I, I tried to use, um, the bin that, or the composting unit that the district supplied. And I never could figure out how to make it work. Um, get the pile in the backyard would have probably been easier, because then I could turn it. There's no, you know, you almost need a concrete mixer, you know, that'll turn itself. Um, so I, I, I don't remember how many people participated in the purchase. Do you remember how many?
We, I'm sure we have data and then we can, we can try, find that out for you and get it back to you. It was, it was quite a few. It was, it was quite popular.
And was there any survey of those people that used the devices that they purchased?
I don't know. Would, I'd have to go back and, I don't think so.
I'll tell you for one.
Yeah. We, we, we actually experienced different types of composting bins, that we did buy some that you, you can turn, but they were smaller and you can turn yourself. The one I think you're thinking about, right, you had to get like a pitchfork and you had to, you had to stir it yourself. That can be a little more challenging. So we, we did look at different kind of composting, to make it easier to, to turn the material.
I'd be interested in some data on, and if you could, figure out any way to get responsive.
Sure.
There are people that will compost, but I'm not sure they need the workshop or the supply of the bins, but.
Calling you in.
Is this just for like yard scraps, like, like?
Both. So the backyard composting bin would take, um, yard and food waste. A verma composting bin would just be food waste, so it would give people the option if they have a yard, um, space. And they have the material, they could use the backyard. If not, they could use a verma composting bin indoors.
And that's like a countertop?
Um, I don't know the particular model we'd look at. I think for the most part, it's something that would go on the floor, but it's smaller than a really large outdoor bin. It might be more of like a rectangular shape, um, but something that you could put in a garage or, or inside. I know people do, um, use those inside.
Even the kitchen scraps one, you think?
It's a, so verma composting is worms, so it's worm composting.
So it's not kitchen scraps, or I'm confused?
So the worms eat the food scraps, yes, but with backyard composting, you need a combination of, um, food scraps and yard waste. So the verma composting is an option for people who don't have yard waste to put into a composting.
And how, how are we choosing the people to participate, or do we just put a call out?
It would just be, yeah, an open program. People would just sign up, um, as long as they're a customer, there wouldn't be any, any other limitation on participation.
Have you looked into the, uh, availability of new composting things that are available?
Um, I've done some previous research. I wanted to kind of get your direction on whether to proceed to kind of finalize all that information. But yeah, there are a lot of different options available for, for bins, so we can definitely explore what we think would work best for, for our customers. But I think offering the two options would, would be smart, just because not everybody has, um, yard waste available.
We saw a composting bin at the conference that turned things into grounds, and I don't think it had worms in it.
So there are, um, ones that are like, I don't know if they're battery operated or, but they are like countertops, so that would be something different, yeah. So that would just be more of like a plug and play. You just put stuff in it and then it takes care of the processing for you.
Make it run.
The worms will always show.
What?
The worms will always show when we compost.
But the one with the grounds, I don't think it had worms in it. I think it just turned it into like ground.
Yeah, there are worms in the ground.
No, 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 grounds, like coffee grounds. Like it turned it into grounds, yes. Not in the ground.
Hey, so I, I'm a, I have no problem. I, I'm not a comp- compostable guy. I, I. I just don't want that stuff in my yard and I'm like, Bob, I don't wanna go and turn it. The other, but, but I support this and I, I know it was really successful the last time we did it. That, that, uh, first, that lady that did the training was wonderful. I mean, she was really good. My problem is there's a certain amount of people in town that. We, we need to give them opt, we need to give people options if we can, and reasonable and affordable and all that. I just think there's a certain amount of people that are gonna go, wait a minute, I thought it was supposed to go in my green can. Now you're telling me I should compost it? I mean, there's, you're gonna create some headaches for yourself.
Yeah, we can definitely educate our customers so they, they know that it's just an option. They have options for how they dispose of their, of their food waste and composting is just another option if they don't wanna use, put it in the organic.
I, I applaud you for that, but I still think you're gonna have some headaches with it, if, if, if we do it. Uh, and I think we should do it. I, I, I think the options are.
Marissa, I take my food scraps stop and.
Take them back, okay. You have words too?
You can follow him, I know, I know. You can follow him all the way home because you can see the.
If we can source a countertop food compost bin, um, is that an opportunity for us to get participation with people in multifamily communities?
Um, I can see what the costs are. I know that they're quite expensive. I don't know what the difference in cost is between those versus the bins that we'd be looking at. I can definitely price them and see if that's something that we'd be able to provide. It wouldn't really work with the workshop itself, um, because the workshop would be teaching you how to compost, how to use the backyard compost or what to put in it. Whereas the, the kitchen, I think the ones that you're referring to, it's just you put your food in it and it just processes it and then you're done. Um, but we can definitely look at, if it's possible to.
We could do those two things in tandem, right?
Yeah, we can look at it for sure.
Marissa, that forty thousand dollars, is that designated just for composting?
Right now, the forty thousand is available just for this program, yes, yeah.
So we have, use it or lose it.
No, we can allocate the funds to a different program. If you said, you know what, composting isn't what we wanna do, we'd rather you focus those, that money on something else. We can request a budget adjustment from Calor Cycle, so that, that's not an issue if you don't want to do this program. Um, November first, I believe, November first or second of twenty twenty-six, that's our, when our expenditure period ends. Um, but if we don't use it for this program, we would use it for something else.
Um, I, do you mind? Thanks. Um, I like it. And, but I kind of agree, like, I'm more curious about the how and ensuring that we're maybe connecting with residents. That this would align with them already. Um, I'm more curious, like, how many workshops would we anticipate this would cover, over what period of time? How many people would it make it, like, what, what would the goal of how many participants would make sense for us? Where it would be like, all right, that was a worthy spend per participant. Um, and then yet, from my experience at the city, for example. Our, um, community gardens is one of our most successful programs. We have the waitlist to participate in the community pro- in the community gardens is like years. Like, there's over a hundred to two hundred people on the waitlist, and this is a paid program. And, uh, we had them come in one time and all they wanted to talk about was composting. And mo- most of them live in multifamily housing, they're all renters. So I just am thinking about how can we maybe like align with targeted groups of people to make sure this is a successful program. Uh, like reaching out to the city, or maybe we, we mention it in a future liaison meeting, like, hey, can we co-advertise this? Or could we do the event at the community garden? Um, and I don't wanna say they all live in apartments. Some of them are like legacy gardeners that have been there for like twenty years and it's a whole community. Another group that stands out to me is, uh, reaching out to our school contacts. When I was in elementary school, there was a verma composting bin there and it was so. it was so awesome. So who's interested in worms? Kids, obviously. Um, so I really liked that the past program was at Fairview Park. I feel like the city's been doing a better job of like meeting people where they're at. They've been doing community feedback events at like coffee shops, breweries. So figuring out where this would be most appropriate. I don't think people are gonna want to have worms and beers. Um, but yeah, do you have a like rough idea of possibly how many workshops this budget would cover or?
Not at this time. Um, it really would depend on the consultant. There are some, um, educational programs that are available at no cost. And then up to a few hundred to a thousand per workshop, just depending on who you're contracting with. I think it would also come down to just the timeframe that we have and then the availability of the consultant that we select. Um, so we wouldn't be able to provide at this time kind of an idea of how far it would go. I think it would also be dependent on how many people are requesting the compost bins. So for subsidizing that, there's going to be a cost per bin. So it might come down to, um, scheduling the workshops and then the remaining funds would be expended once all of the compost bins had been, um, allocated, something like that. We can definitely provide information as the program, um, gets developed and share that with you. Um, and those are all great suggestions that we can definitely take into account.
Yeah, I know this is a discussion item, so those are my sort of lingering curiosities about the project, but I, I support it.
I would support it also.
One oth- one other kind of side note, uh, we, we offer pails to, um, um, our customers. Uh, do you have any idea how many pails we've given out? And I had a pail and my wife didn't like it, so I brought it back. We, we collect our food scraps in, um, used plastic bags. And I, and I put them in the, the upland trash cans. But I think we ought to expand our education on uh, food scrap collection devices rather than just focus on the pails. Uh, the pail is large and it's obtrusive in the kitchen. Especially in a house that has ants periodically. Whether they can get in the pail or not, I don't know, but we've just gone through a bout of having ants. They, they can't get in the little plastic bags, little sandwich bags or gallon bags. But, so I think we ought to consider expanding our website. In some, some educational process to give people alternatives to the pails.
I think we have in the past, um, kind of promoted a make your own, you know, food scrap bin. So if the pail doesn't work and you've got like a old plastic container that sandwich meat comes in or just different things. I think we have promoted that, but we can definitely expand what's on the website.
Peanut butter filled pretzels come in a.
There you go.
It's like this big around, it's about that tall and it's my wife's choice. I mean, it's perfect.
Yeah, and, and that's definitely what we want to promote is reuse.
She shops at, I have markets, I guess, because they give her grea- the green bags. And they fit, so that, that seems to be a pretty good alternative.
Yeah, but we should definitely expand that. I'm actually working on getting the data for you on how many pails we've distributed. For twenty-four, twenty-five, it was somewhere around fourteen hundred. Um, and that is in part because CRNR was doing some door-to-door outreach. So all of the organics customers who would, were previously exempt that received their organics cart, our sustainability specialist from CRNR was going door-to-door and distributing pails and providing education.
I think on our website, we also suggest if there's odors involved, you know, they potentially could freeze it.
Right.
There is maybe some more information than, than I paid attention to.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Bring back a.
So just so I'm clear, if you're giving us the okay, then we'll kind of move forward. And then, yeah, we can definitely come back with an update on, uh, kind of the information that we've assembled and where we're at with the program.
I have a sense we've given you the.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, um, that's our items of study, going to closing items. Any director comments? I have a couple, of course. Um, survey is, uh, Probuski done the survey?
Under.
It's underway, that's what I meant to say, okay. Um, I got an email yesterday from Swana, this, Swana, help me with Swana, but I don't remember what Swana.
Solid Waste Association.
Solid Waste Association of North America. The, they put on an event every November in Ontario. Um, it's the Southern California Waste Management Forum and I know you've, Marissa, you've attended. I don't know if you've ever been to one, Scott. I've been to a couple. Um, I, they're worth going to. I mean, there's a lot of really good information, especially thirteen eighty-three information. And, um, if you're interested, it's November nineteenth at the Hilton in Ontario. The keynote speaker this year is Zoe Heller, who's the chairman or the chief of Cow Recycle. There's a lot of other stuff, if you, I'm sure Nolani can get you the information or I've got it via email, so. I'm trying to clear my day that day, so I may want to go to that, okay.
Nineteenth is a Wednesday?
It's a Wednesday.
How, how long is the conference?
Uh, eight to four thirty. Um, I, I've traditionally, it seems like all the good stuff is presented in the morning. And then they have lunch and then they have after, afternoons usually break out sessions. Um, the other thing I wanted to tell you guys all about, I'm gonna maybe look to staff for some help with this. Last Thursday, um, we had in my neighborhood a neighborhood watch meeting. And Carla, the real estate agent who kind of heads all this up for our neighborhood, uh, asked if I wanted to come speak about, we had talked over the last several months about the grea- apparently my neighborhood's really heavy on, on grease in the, in the system. So I asked if I could say a few words and she said, sure. And so after the police presented the neighborhood watch program, I got up and spoke. And I took those, those of you that went to the Eco Expo, I took the cockroaches and I took the rags and I took the grease and I gotta tell you, Carla, the next day stopped by my house and she said, you were the hit of the whole thing because people had no idea what was going on. She said, they liked you better than they liked the police department. Now, don't any of you say anything Friday, okay? But the, the idea was the grease blew up, blew people. There were like fifty people in this neighborhood watch. And, and I thought it was a really effective way. I, I had some flyers that Mark had given me and some flyer, some of the stickers for the what's to recycle. Um, so my, my question or idea is, I don't know if we can contact the different neighborhood. I don't know how you would find out where neighborhood watch programs are, except that the police department would probably know, right? Because they're the ones doing it. Um, it's a, I, I realize it's a small cross-section of the, of the town or the people that we serve to get the information. But these people were generally interested and they all wanted to see the, the grease and the, the, the other thing, the flushable wipes that blew, people didn't understand that, so. Somewhere if we can get some information about how we contact and I, I think by having, i- if it's in your zone, if you're, you're zone and you can go to these things, I think it's good for you guys to see some of your constituents. So I'm getting a lot more waves from people now while I'm sitting in my.
I would suggest we, maybe we do, do something on the website. You know, parallel to what Mike's talking about.
That's a good idea.
And maybe think through other things that from the Eagles, Eagles, uh, day, you know, that were popular. So, you know, I was here and I saw the, uh, postcards that we were passing out. And then there was a place where people, people and children could try to put things in the correct bin. And so what I, what I suggested to staff that day was, there was, there was a kid there trying to figure it out. So I said, just look on your card. Uh, the, you know, the cards have already been available. Um, so, so, um, staff thought that was a good idea because the, the kids then became more knowledgeable and they had the first application of using the card.
Anyway, I didn't mean to cause you more work, but I just thought, here's another chance for us to get that community outreach. Okay.
I have comments, or one comment. Um, I've been thinking about the survey since our last meeting and totally could have put this in an email, but didn't have time. And I was just, I guess it's sort of left me pondering why we only are sending the survey to homeowners or single-family renters. Um, I understand that they are technically are paying customers. But as someone who was a renter in this city for ten years and who's, who, most people their own age is still a renter, most of our neighbors are renters because we own a duplex. Um, I just feel like it's, the survey is, it's a lot of money and it's, um, one of our opportunities to learn how we can improve. And our renters may not be directly the paying customers, but they are our constituents. And so I guess I was left wondering maybe what, what went wrong per se when we were, um, conducting the survey to renters. Did we feel like we were just getting like too much mixed feedback? Maybe we needed like secondary questions for the renters or, or what there. Um, but even like anecdotally, uh, in my experience, I have had a lot of renters be really confused about like the services we offer or how, um, how our services get paid for. For example, like a bulky item pickup, I, you know, they get a lot of misinformation from their landlords. So I had, um, neighbors that were not aware that bulky item pickups were free. And their landlords were, um, charging them for it. And then alternatively, I had other, um, on the other side of our property is a line of townhomes. They all have regular trash bins, um, but they thought that they were getting charged by weight of their trash cans. Um, and they're technically like renters. So that's just something, I'm not saying for this year, but possibly I would be, I would be interested in revisiting uh, who we're doing, who, who we're inviting to, uh, participate in the survey and what we're looking again from two different groups, right? Owners and renters.
I think part of the problem we have though is the survey's based on our customer. And technically renters aren't our customers because they're not in it. We contract or the, the bill goes to the, like you just said, the.
The landlords, yeah.
So I, I, I think you bring an excellent point, but I think we're gonna have to find out from whoever does the survey. How do we identify or how can we get calling lists easily?
Well, if it's based off of voter, I'm pretty sure he uses voter data, so that would be everyone. And, and also Costa Mesa is sixty percent renters, so I guess I view, I view us as the district. We serve renters.
Oh, absolutely.
And so I'm sure there's information we can glean from talking to them that would maybe help us make more money too, down the road, you know?
It, it just, they, they should engage in the survey, um, with the callers. Particularly when they say renting, are you renting an apartment or are you renting a home? Because if they're in apartment, then they're not our customers. They, they have bin service. So there's a difference between bins and carts. Carts are what we provide, the carts, right? It's a side loader, picks it up. Bins are the front loaders. And bins are usually serviced on large apartment complexes. Now, we serve them on the sewer side, but we don't serve them on the trash side. So that's what we, that's, I think there was one year we found like thirty percent of the respondents were from renters in apartments. We said, well, wait a minute, that's not our demographics, that's not our customers. That's why after that survey, I think that was like six years ago, five years ago, we, we told the, our, our consultants, please focus on single fam- single family homes because we know those for sure are our customers. And sometimes the, it, the, the water gets muddy when you talk about renters because now you can say, okay, are you renting a townhome or are you renting a home? Or if we ask them, do you have cart or bin service, they're not gonna know, you know, they don't know the difference between a cart and a bin. And so we have to be more explicit, are you in apartment, are you in a condo, what, what do you live in? So we could really clearly identify, are you our customers or not? And, and we could have the consultant do that. Hopefully he is doing that, so, because we want to make sure that it's a fair representation of, of who we serve.
Yeah, yeah. What's the purpose of this? I think it's probably obvious, but what's the purpose of the survey?
Well, the purpose of the survey is a, a, is a couple of fault. One, we want, we want to engage how well we're performing. You know, are we performing well? What, what is their, uh, opinion of, of CMSD? We also, if we have new programs, like one of the new programs we're considering is the, um, pay-as-you throw program of variable rates. Would they accept that? Um, if it is acceptable, then we can come back to the board and say, hey, look, your constituents said this, this is a good thing to go. Let's look at it. Um, it's a good way to engage on our, our, our service levels, what, how they think of the district and also, uh, uh, new programs that we're considering. We want, we want to talk to our residents.
Well, for example, I live in a multi-family community. I rent. I would be interested in options like the composting bin, like for food waste. So I think to not, I think to not include renters in the survey for me, and really to Cheyenne's point, like I was elected to serve all of the people of Division Two, not just single-family home dwellers. So I think it's important to get, I think it's important to get their feedback.
But sure, it's sure, I understand that, but I, I think you also understand, um, you don't, you don't, we, we don't want people who, we don't want to subsidize the cost for people not paying for the service, right? So you, you are, you, you're a renter, you, you don't pay for, um, trash service, right?
But renters still pay their landlords. In fact, most renters pay than what mortgages.
We do a Prop two eighteen here, it goes to the property owners, not to the renters. It goes to the property owners, the landlords.
Property owners are not the ones experiencing on the front lines, maybe like a delayed trash pickup.
Yeah.
Or I'm trying to get rid of a mattress and I, I'm having a hard time coordinating like.
Or keep getting stuck behind a trash.
Yeah, or the trash trucks during rush hour. So I feel like, like the landlords might not even live.
But if, again, if, if it's an apartment complex, it's, it's not our service. They call the city, they need to call the city. That's their, that's their franchise agreement.
But there's a range of like, for example, the duplex we have versus the large, you're right, versus the five plus units, right? Those are technically commercial, right? So five below.
And those we do survey. We survey those people. We survey the people, the small apartment complexes that have five units or less. We do survey them. Those are our customers. We will survey them. We will, we will ask them.
But that's not a single-family home. I'm kind of confused.
Right, and that's, I'm, that's what I'm saying. It's not, it's not black and white, right? So we do service some multi-family units, but it's like small ones, like five units or less. The large complex, large comp- apartment complex that have a hundred units, a hundred and fifty, we don't service those. Those are bin services. So we do service some multi-family units and we do survey them. So again, it's, it's not a black and white answer. It's very, it's very convoluted.
So we are surveying people who live in multi-family communities.
Units that usually they have five or less units.
Okay.
Or is it five or four?
Four, five, five, something like that, yeah.
I guess in the survey script, it said, do you rent a single family?
It did, yeah.
And that was it.
It said if you rent, I mean, like if you rent a condo or an apartment or a townhouse, terminate the call.
Yeah, I might, I'll have to look at it.
We, we probably should look at, you mentioned that previously we had done surveys where a large multi-family complexes were interviewed or surveyed. It might be interesting to know what the results were versus, you know, what we're doing presently, but.
Yeah, I live in a six-unit community, so it's not the foreign under, but I live in a six-unit community. And people are constantly throwing out large items. Nobody knows like what the protocol is, even though it's on the front of the dumpster. Nobody knows what to do with it. And it's not just my community, the community next door, they actually have carts, it's eight units, I think. And they constantly have bulky items just sitting, you know, in the, there's like a landscaped area in the front of the property. And if they knew like about the services available to them, I.
Well, like, well, your units, again, your unit wouldn't be eligible for the bulk item for, on our front because you're not paying into solid waste program. So you can't, you wouldn't be eligible for it under your, your, your complex would not be eligible under the large item collection because you're not paying into the system. You're not paying solid waste rates, are you?
We use it all the time though.
But you're not paying solid waste rates.
I have no idea because we don't pay, I don't think that.
Yeah, right, so, so if you're not paying, if you're not paying into the system, it's enterprise fund, right? So it's a pay-as-you-go, you pay for the program. If you're not paying for the system, then you technically shouldn't get the service.
I get that makes sense to you guys, but again, like we have constituents that we're looking out for.
And we can, we can educate you and tell you, you're, you're, that, that if you're not, if you're not a customer at CMSD resident, you gotta go through, through the city or the landlord and that, and, and I understand that makes it more difficult.
What would they go through the city for, or me?
Because.
What would I, what would I?
They have, it's a franchise agreement. We can do a separate study session on this. It's not on the agenda. We're kind of coming out of here.
It can be an issue.
You know, yeah, I can, I can put this on the agenda. We can have full-on discussion on this. But yeah, it's not a black and white issue.
Yeah, maybe a study session item on how renters broadly, then broken down by category, get served by us or served by a different entity would be super helpful because I think Director Will Shire and I are very interested in ensuring we don't overlook renters and their experiences. And specifically to me, it seems like we spend a lot of money on the survey. And so I want to, I want to make sure that the impact of the survey doesn't overlook that demographic.
Sure. But I just wanted you to understand, when you say 60% of customers are renters, I would say percent of our renters in our service is probably 10%. Okay. So the majority of the renters are not our customers. We can, we can get that data for you.
Yeah, because they live in plus five units.
Right. Right.
Which I'm just learning now. Based off of the survey script, I didn't realize even that difference.
Yeah.
Sounds like the city also ought to be involved because they're serving the five unit and above.
I don't think they have a program though. The city doesn't have a program, I don't think, like we do.
I think they have a sustainability coordinator, but.
Yeah, would that be public work? So public work serves. See, I don't, well, yeah, you're right. There may be an org chart of where everything falls. City or not, or us.
By the way, the other three directors share you and Director Will Shire's concern about.
Yes. Thank you.
It's not just you two. All time in this field. Okay.
I didn't want to speak for you guys.
Everybody else does go, right? Anything else? All right. Okay, okay. About bringing it back on the study.
Yes.
Got that?
Yeah, that'd be great.
One question. Maybe next liaison meeting, put that idea on the survey and the discussion. City responsibility versus sanitary district. I mean, just to get it out there.
Sure.
And I noticed there's only seven items for the discussion on Friday. Surprised. Well, I'm sure the school district will take most of the time up.
They're talking about e-bikes again. They can't seem to get their program together for e-bikes. I know a cop and remind them.
We should invite one.
I love.
Are you doing the recycling coach program?
Yeah.
Is that you or is that?
Believe me, I'll just be giving kind of an overview of the program from more of the customer perspective, like what service will be available to customers once we have it up and running. And we're still working with legal counsel to approve the contract. So hopefully we'll have it, we'll be able to get started pretty soon. But yeah, I'll just be giving kind of an overview of what the program will offer.
Be a little more brief than Mark.
Yes.
Okay. If there's nothing else, Scott, have a nice vacation. Stay dry. Hopefully no hurricanes.
Blading.
No worries, Jim.